I get to read the script twice tonight. Oh, it's being recorded. Nice. Okay, here we go. Um, hello Jeff? Who else do we have here that?
I think when you go through your spiel, right? You get through that.
Lydia, just stop talking and do your thing. Okay, so as Chair of the Maynard School Committee, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Bethlin Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
All right, uh, let's see. Jeff Ferranti.
Yes.
Do we have Wayne tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay, Jennifer Gaudette.
Here.
Brian Haas.
Here.
And anticipated guest speakers on the agenda. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Olga Doktorov. I hope I said that right.
Not here yet.
Not here yet. Okey doke, she's not here. Hopefully, she's gonna show up. And this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the trans-
Olga's here.
Okay, Olga Doktorov. Please say here. Maybe?
She's, she just, she just came in. I just admitted her. Oh, wait. Let me unmute her. Olga, you here?
Yes, yes, I am. All right, great. Thank you. Uh, in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement. Please shut the door. Um, suspend the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a citizen's comment period. For this meeting, the Maynard School Committee is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meter, meeting prior to doing so. So if you are planning to record or broadcast, please raise your hand in the participant box now. And I'm looking to see if anybody... All right, I see no hands. So I'm assuming no one will be recording or broadcasting. Um, most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools District website under School Committee, Agendas, SC Agenda 202021. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise, which I will be. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, including colloquy with other members, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Now, for citizens' comments, any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments4, numeral four, scmeeting, all one word, no spaces, Uh, comments need to be emailed in advance to, of the, um, reading of citizens' comments. Your email must include your first and last name and re, uh, your street address in order for us to be able to read it. Emails without names and/or addresses cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, it is suggested that you limit it to approximately 350 words. Statements longer than 350, 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time but will be submitted for public record regardless. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included. Please be aware that the citizens' comments agenda item is devoted, is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the citizenry. As such, it is structured primarily, its structure primarily supports unidirectional public recording of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. This means that we will not be engaging in a conversation after I read your comments, nor will we be answering them. Okay? Um, thank you very much. So, um, we have called to order, we will not be having an executive session tonight because we didn't do our homework. So, um, I, do I, I need to?
I think we've done call to order. I think you need to do, I don't think we've called to order. We need to do roll call.
Wasn't that my whole reading thing? Now?
No, that was the spiel. That's, we were, you, it's our attendance. Now we gotta...
All right. Call to order. All right, I will entertain a motion to start. Do we need to make a motion to start?
No, you just do roll call vote. Natasha Rivera, Lydia Clancy, yeah.
Um, roll call to start the meeting. Uh, Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Uh, Mary Branley.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Bethlin Houlihan.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. You would think by now I would know this. Okay, so we are not going to be having an executive session to, this evening. Um, do I need to make a motion to take it out of order? Nope, okay, skip that. Next, on to approval of minutes. If there are no objections, I move, I would like to approve the meeting minutes for October 1st, 2020.
Um, I think you, was there an edit? I think there was an edit, right? With edits, right?
With edits, yes. Except with edits.
Except with edits. Do you want to indicate what that edit is?
Oh, uh, in the, it stated the policy was EEA, um, home bound instruction. And the call letters for home bound instruction are actually IHBF. That was the only correction I had. No objections? All right, let's move on. Uh, approval of the warrants, 21-022, 21-023, 21-024, 21-025. If there are no objections, I would like to approve, um, those warrants.
We're, are we, um, are we accepting the approved warrants, right?
Yeah, accepting.
They've already been approved, so I think we're accepting them? Is that?
Yeah, I think that is the language.
Okay. Let me just make a note of that. All right, accepting. So we need to change that on BDF or BDF or whatever it is, BDB. Okay, so with, out?
Objection.
Objection? We're accepting the warrants? Yep, okay, good. Urgent business. I don't have any, do you, Brian?
No urgent business, business tonight.
Fantastic. Um, citizen comments. As of 20 seconds ago, I didn't have any, but let me look.
And Lee, just, I don't know if this, it's 7:13. I don't know if, I don't, we kind of, I don't know if anyone might email in the next two minutes, but...
Well, I can, I can always check back. We don't have any.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I, I know, we hadn't got any, but just in case someone does, is typing one actively right now.
Squeak one in in the next two minutes. I will, I will read it. Um, and now we have Brian Superintendent's report.
Well, I am glad to be here. I am excited to tell you that we brought back Cohort B today of grades 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12. And it was actually starting to feel like a school again, walking around and there were, you know, significantly larger numbers of students and teachers in the buildings. All three buildings were getting there. It was, but I have to say, from talking to the administrative, administration, so several of the teachers at each building, students at each building, they're happy to be back. The kids are really happy to be back. The teachers are happy to have the kids there. Even the secretaries, they're excited to have more people in the building, really everybody across the board. It's just a win-win. But I do want to comment on the overall COVID numbers in Maynard and in surrounding areas, because this conversation seems like it should happen now. You know, so people can understand the thinking, because we've gotten, so I've gotten emails like, you know, why are you opening now? The numbers seem to be going up in Maynard. And so truth be told, yes, the numbers are going up in Maynard. Not just Maynard, across the state and really across the country. For that matter, it's kind of working from east to west in Massachusetts anyway. So yeah, there are more cases. Um, and if we use some surrounding districts as an example, because they're actually a little bit ahead of us, if you will, like Hudson, for example, their numbers spiked up earlier than our numbers did. And what people are finding, and when I say people, there's other superintendents, towns, that there are more cases. What's interesting is they're not in the schools. So the reason, and so I bring that to your attention because we found this interesting, because I think back in summer, we've just all thought and sort of were going along the thinking of more, more kids in school, more cases of COVID. We'd have to close, we'd go remote, da-da-da-da-da. We followed that path. What we're finding is schools are really clean right now. We're disinfecting them multiple times a day. We're wearing masks. In Massachusetts in particular, people are pretty good at following the directions. So we're social distancing. We're abiding by all that. And it's working really well in schools. The issue schools, and I think, and you know, I don't think Maynard were different. We will probably feel this at some point, is that what will cause us to close temporarily is likely to be, we'll get one or two people that do test positive. And then it's the close contact, which in several of the surrounding towns, it's been a teacher who will get a positive test. And because they had lunch at school the previous day, and you obviously aren't wearing your mask when you're eating and you're eating with a group of colleagues, that all of a sudden, that one person who tests positive, who now has to be out, et cetera, and then all the close contacts. So depending on the size of the, the group, that could be six people or 10 people, that, that staffing issue could close a school temporarily. But even the schools that have closed, they've been very specific about the language they use, about why they're closing and for how long they're closing. So it's, we're gonna close for two weeks so that we can air it out and give, we air out the building, that's kind of, and that's the timeframe that people need to quarantine. And then we're coming back. So I'm happy to say, our numbers in the schools really can't be better. We're, we are not seeing this widespread transmission of COVID at all in the schools. And actually, the numbers in Maynard pop down a little bit. They're hovering, if I recall from this morning, right around seven. The good news is, we are working really hard. We have constant communication internally with all the school nurses who have constant communication with the Board of Health, with, um, and just the updates from the CDC and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So there's a lot of information. There's a lot of collaboration. And I just have to say, I'm very proud of the work that everybody's doing. But I wanted to give that little explanation, because I think if you don't sort of know that backstory of why schools are or aren't closing, that would be why. So what else is going on that's very exciting? So we had, um, I'm gonna like, continue, but then we're gonna backtrack to professional development, because we had some really exciting professional development. And I'm gonna ask Jennifer Gaudette, Assistant Superintendent, to talk about that in a minute. I'll get through some boring stuff first, because that's more exciting. But we did have an opportunity this year to adjust how we do snow days. We don't always have this opportunity, because typically, the commissioner says, hmm, when it snows, that's a snow day, and you just get to make that up in June. And we all know how valuable school days are on June 15th for everybody. Those are very high-level learning days. However, this year, we have the opportunity to use our remote learning program for snow days. And we worked with the MEA, and they actually did a nice survey. And in agreement with that survey, there were 60-plus percent supported using remote learning. Well, I'll make that recommendation that we too, like surrounding districts, will use remote learning for snow days just this year. And that's supported by Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Brian, can I ask a question about that? Because I know, and it, it came up, um, now that we're all remote and we have this possibility, um, how do we address? I guess, like, when you think of snow day, sometimes it's storm, right? And there's potential power outages. And, and, and potentially, students may not, or families might not have power in their house. How are we considering that implication with this in the event that that does happen? Because that seems like an equity issue or inequity, if they're not able to access that. I know, I've, I read somewhere, actually, not that long ago, Concord opened up, I think they're like a cafeteria or something to families. It was like a storm recently for families who didn't have power. But I, 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 obviously, through a snowstorm, I can't imagine that as a possibility. But I just would like to hear about how a power outage can be addressed if we are, during a storm, remote.
Yeah, great question. And we've talked about that. We talked about it on the superintendent's site. And basically, the answer is, we're gonna take it as it comes. We know that there, there will potentially be people that don't have power and won't be able to access. Unless it's a statewide state of emergency, enough people will be able to access. And if we need to adjust, we'll adjust.
I know Maynard, um, is a little spotty with the power. And I would, I would, would wonder if we could be a little proactive and before we get into the snow season. I mean, obviously, it's too late, because it already snowed in October. But if we could maybe have a communication to parents, because I'd hate for the snow, the storm to happen, and then they don't have power and they don't have an understanding of, you know, it's anxiety provoking, you know? What do I do? My, my family, I don't have power. So maybe while they do have power, we can give them a little bit of, you know, like, in the event this happens, this is how we will treat that scenario. Uh, or these are the expectations, you, you know? You can give us a call, call this number, you know? Notify us of your power outage, whatever, you know? But I think there needs to be like a, a backup plan.
We'll communicate with them. So, just to be clear, the backup plan is really, if you don't have power, you're not gonna be doing anything, because you don't have power. But we will be communicating. So this was sort of the first step in letting you know that we were recommending using remote learning. But we will be communicating that with the wider community, the parents, et cetera, so they know what the expectations are and how to proceed if they have power or don't have power.
Okay, so maybe we'll hear more about it another meeting?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Are we still getting, aren't there usually a, like, certain number of built-in snow days every year that you don't have to make at the end? No?
They always just revert back to the end of the school year.
Okay. And is this something we vote on as a school committee? Or just, that's the recommendation? And when you say you're making a recommendation? Sorry if it's something I should know, but...
No, it's a good question. I don't know if that has to be voted on or not. I think if you would like to vote on it, by all means, feel free to vote on that.
Maybe it'd be helpful if we have, because I mean, I have questions. And so if we're gonna, maybe we can send you, um, what those questions are and that may be an opportunity at a future, more sooner, school committee meeting, before it starts, we can maybe hear those responses and how, um, you know, whatever questions are, like, I mean, attendance, like, I don't know. I just, a lot of things.
All right, so let's do this. Let's, let's have anyone who has questions, send them to me, and I will funnel them to Brian, and we can get those answered.
Absolutely. And then the last thing that we'll talk about would be professional development, which I'll turn over to Jennifer Gaudette.
So we had, we're fortunate on the election day that we were able to run a professional development day for our staff. We do this every four years on national elections so that we, our, our students are not in, in the schools when we have community members coming in to, to vote. So we continue that for this year. We had two sessions that we asked professional staff to choose from. One session was the Neuroscience of Anxiety, which was run by a speaker, who I am blanking on the name. But she is a principal at Dearborn Academy, I believe, which is a special, the school she's at is a special education school that specializes in working with students who have severe anxiety. And so she presented on the Neuroscience of Anxiety, both for our students, but then also for our staff. We will be having her back out to give a session for caregivers, you know, anxiety related to caregivers for caregivers, but then also for our staff on that, so that we can help support that as well. Then we had another session later on in the day, which was the Emotional Trauma of Teaching During a Pandemic. This was a much different session, so not necessarily, you know, research around anxiety and, and trauma and things of that nature, but more focused on giving staff an opportunity to explore how this pandemic and pandemic teaching has impacted them. Talking about going through the grief process and then some strategies for how to be able to support themselves and their colleagues in this way. So those were two really great sessions. And then the remainder of the day was taken with staff working on professional learning that was at their direction so that they were able to engage in learning or engage in work that was needed to get ready for the teaching with the students. So that's very exciting. We're very excited to have, um, as I said, these speakers and presenters come back to us for additional professional learning throughout the rest of the, the year. Because the reviews were very positive for both of the sessions.
Thank you. That would be my report for this time. You'll have much more exciting news next time, because we'll have more information about the full return to hybrid model and some, you'll send me some questions about remote learning, which I will provide answers to you for next time.
All right, thank you. Chair's report. I don't have a lot. Um, uh, the Select Board, when they were discussing their goals, two Mondays ago, um, talked about wanting to, um, have more communication directly with the school committee. And they want to establish regularly scheduled quarterly meetings with us. Um, full board and full board. So it's not, not a tri-board. It's just the two of us getting together. And they are interested in learning more about our operational challenges and decisions, and they want us to learn more about theirs. And they're hoping that together, we can, um, figure out ways to help each other and find non-monetary solutions to, um, help solve our problems and to support our collective vision for Maynard and our students. They, they said that they would love to have discussions with us that don't include money. And so I said, all right, sounds like a good deal. So we will be scheduling those soon. And the second thing is, um, and this is for the parents in the community. As you know, today, all grades in all three schools entered into a hybrid schooling model. There has been and continues to be much discussion and debate about whether Maynard Public Schools should proceed with plans to bring all grades back to school in a hybrid mode for part-time, in-person instruction. At this time, there are as many advocates for returning to fully remote learning as there are for the immediate shift to full-time, in-person instruction. And the school committee hears from both regularly. "We want the entire school community to be assured that the committee routinely seeks out guidance and relevant current data to help inform any decision we make regarding how Maynard Public Schools can best serve their students. We will continue to be objectively cautious in our decisions on how to proceed, and we ask for your understanding and patience in all matters of COVID-related district business. If the state, Board of Health, and the numbers dictate a particular direction, we will act accordingly. None of us has ever had to negotiate a year like this one. There is no roadmap, and the bearings are mutable. We are taking it day by day. So if you can't be patient, at least be kind. Thank you." And now, we are going to have a presentation from Olga Doktorov from the high school.
Somebody has to unmute her.
It's coming.
All right, all right, it's awesome. So now, we just need to figure out, Colleen, how to actually show them what I'm doing. You can click on share screen. Yes, yes, yes.
So I made you co-host, so you can have that ability.
You've got the power.
Power, right?
Don't go crazy now.
Well, I don't know. It's hard to resist. All right. All right, so hopefully, you guys can see it now. And I will go back to the phone's screen. Okay, perfect. So, uh, thank you very much for having me here. I've been trying to get to you guys, um, since March. I was actually on this, on the agenda back in March. And then COVID hit, and I was taking off. So I appreciate you, uh, taking the time with me today. So I am here on behalf of the Social Studies Department in the high school. I am the social studies, um, lead teacher. And I just wanted to provide some updates on what's happening there. There are some major changes coming, and they might impact you as a body. So I thought that you might want to know about them. So kind of two main points that we're gonna go over today. First of all, it's the changes in the scope and sequence of the social studies courses and implementation of the Civics Action Project. So old model, uh, the core social studies courses included 8th grade World History I, 9th grade Early American History, plus a quarter-long course in civics. 10th grade was Modern World History. 11th grade, kind of Current American History. 12th grade was a senior project. And graduation requirements were to pass three years of social studies, including one year of United States history, and to pass the senior project. Well, there is a new model. And the new model is based on the new social studies curriculum frameworks adopted back in June of 2018, as well as the chapter 296 of the Acts of 2018 that Garon Baker assigned back in November of 2018. According to this new model, 8th grade is no longer, um, world history. Now it's civics, and they have to implement the Civics Action Project. And 9th through 12th grade, um, we have all the old courses plus World History I got kind of shoved up to the high school. And the civic, we have to implement yet another Civics Action Project. Graduation requirements remain the same as of right now. However, after I've sent this presentation to Colleen, Mr. Corregerius informed me that he actually sent, um, a request for a policy approval to change it to four years of, uh, history requirement at the high school to kind of try to alleviate some of those pressures that have been put on the history department. So I guess the ball is on your court, as dear school committee. The only thing to kind of consider is that if we increase the graduation requirements, it will certainly greatly improve the scope and sequence of the high school. But it also means we'll need an additional FTO, which would put some budgetary constraint on what the district can and cannot do. Um, so original implementation schedule, when we all got, when we got this, when I, when I got to the position of the lead teacher last year, the idea was that in summer 2018, Jean Lobel and Corey Sullivan, uh, worked on developing civics curriculum for the 8th grade course, because that's what we had to implement first. Because that's what we had to implement first. So that happened. That was great. And then in 2019, 2020, we planned to implement the civics course in the eighth grade. Pilot the civics action project in the eighth grade. Review various scope and sequence models for the new high school courses through site visits to other high school in the state. That was the plan to do through March and May, and then make the final determination of what exactly we're planning to do in June. Get trained in implementation of civic section project from October through June. And then presented the school committee in March and reach out to the PTO. And then in 2020, 2021, the idea was that we will actually implement the civics action project within 20th century American history class. Which is our 11th graders finalized curriculum maps for the new courses and identified textbooks for them. And in 2021, 22, implement the new high school social studies courses with civics action projects will be fully aligned with what the states wants us to be aligned with. Reality. I don't know if you got the memo, but we have coronavirus shutdown. So eighth grade did not finish the civics course curriculum. They stopped in March and since March, they were trying to kind of mostly focus on review of the previous topics, but they were not really able to finish everything. They had to stop the civics action project during the very early stages, so they did not get far. No sites visits were conducted. Jennifer Godette and I had multiple visits scheduled the week after we got shut down. So we had great plans and then we had to cancel it all. And at that time, we were like, well, maybe we can visit them the week after, or maybe the week after. And now we are here in November. Training on the civics action project was not finished. I was conducting the training in in alignment with what state was trying to do. We've had multiple meetings with my department members and we took under our wing Corey Sullivan from Fowler. So Mike Barton and Costello allowed her to come up to high school and join us for the training that I was conducting. So that was great. And again, the presentation to you guys got canceled. So what exactly are we trying to do this year? We have to come up with a specific scope and sequence option for the high school. And really figure out what we're doing this year. And we have to do it sooner rather than later because realistically, we will need textbooks for all of the courses. So we're talking about three core courses. So three sets of students needing brain new textbooks. So that's quite a monetary issue there. Because again, if you think about that, the average cost of the online textbook for six years, the subscription is about $100 now. So Mr. Corregianus and I talked about estimating the the cost of that at about $25,000. So we will try to maybe roll it out on stages as much as we can, but if we can take completely new courses, that would be that would be an issue. And civics action project will be implemented with the eighth graders and with the 11th graders somehow in a hybrid remote format. Which is very challenging because we don't see our students as much as we saw them typically. We don't see kids, we our school year got shortened. There are all kinds of anxiety provoking issues from increase of coronavirus cases to elections to everything. So it's hard, it will be extremely hard to do that. We are working on strengthening the connection with the PTO. So Cindy Langlois is here and she might say something later on, but we've talked with the PTO back in March. Actually, we that meeting we made happen with the high school PTO. We've been in the communication with Cindy, who's the PTO president of high school. Ever since kind of talking about what PTO might help us with with the civic action project, but I will get into that a little bit later. And Sydney was kind enough to reach out to the PTOs of other buildings. Who are also willing to support us in this project. So we're trying to do as much of community outreach as we possibly can. Present to the school committee, here I am. And continue training on the civics action project implementation through the state and run through me. So it's an ambitious plan because we need to get through all this, but the it's been really hard to teach this year. And I love hybrid. I am one of the I teach most in ninth graders, so I've been I've been lucky to have my kids in front of me, at least some of them for the last, you know, four weeks or so. It's 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 much, much better than the remote, but it's just every lesson needs to be readjusted for the hybrid for for the hybrid or remote format. Everything the grading now takes forever and the amount of emails that we get. So we need to get there at some point, but for now, we just need to also have a chance to catch our breath first a little bit. So hopefully, once we get more in, you know, once we now introduced the highs, the rest of the high school students. And we get in the groove a little bit, maybe close the first quarter grades, we might get into that a bit more. So this is kind of the broad changes, but the civics action project is something that might impact the school committee directly. So let's delve into that. So civics action project. Students are supposed to go implement that and go through that in the eighth grade and once at some point of the high school career. So eighth grade is very prescribed, has to take place that year. High school, they're really giving us quite a lot of freedom to figure out what we want to do it and how we want to implement it. Objective to address a root cause of a community issue either by seeking to influence public opinion or policy. And the idea is that when you're working with students, you want to go through the six stages. Examine self and civic identity, identify an issue that might exist in the community. And the community can be really can really be thought of broadly. It can be school community, it can be community of Maynard, it can be state counties, country, world. It can be quite, it can vary quite a bit. So then research and investigate kind of what's happening, the root cause. Develop an action plan of something you can actually do to solve it. Take action, so actually implement it, then reflect and showcase. And then you also want to make sure that the the action project is defined by this following key components. It must be student led, it must be project based, it has to be real of world versus just hypothetical key studies. It has to be rooted in an understanding of system impact. Meaning that it's not something you do once and that's it. It's not like a fundraiser you run. It is something that can impact the system of a root cause of whatever issue they are talking about. It has to be goal driven, inquiry based, nonpartisan, process focused and action based. Colleen attached to the agenda today, kind of the FAQ page, as well as the quick reference guide that state put together where some of those stages are explained a bit more if if you would like some light reading on your free time. So you're welcome to look at that, but I'm certainly will be answering questions later on. Oftentimes we get the question about senior project versus civics action project. Senior project must is what people are doing in their 12th year grade, right? And this is a graduation requirement. So senior project must be connected to the area of study career students have chosen to focus that year. But it doesn't have to be to result in a policy or public opinion change. I apologize for your typo there. So examples of senior projects can be designing a video game, writing a play, building a robot. You know, it can be quite varied and not something that necessarily goes for pop policy or public opinion. While the civics action project has to be policy or public opinion oriented. So implications of the civics action project. It's going to be extremely challenging to do it in the remote hybrid format this year, but it's going to be also very challenging in the future years. If we have to cover everything that we now have to cover within three years of history plus due to this. And there will be at least 10 projects or more going at the same time. So five sections of 11 graders and five sections of eighth graders. So again, we're talking about at least 10 projects going on at the same time. Since and it can be even more because students have a choice to opt out of the whole class project. So if they don't feel strongly that that's not something you want to pursue, they can do their own thing or small group. Taken place within any given year. So if it's a policy proposal. School committee is the easiest, most accessible policy making body that our students might have access to. So we keep the we as a, you know, department heads in and social studies directors in the state. Keep trying to talk to the state about that, that the school committee's principals, board of selectmen, you know, state senate and whatnot will get completely overwhelmed with all these projects, but they say, no, no, that's fine. So we'll we'll see. Some of you might have experienced, well, you some of you definitely experienced these civics action projects in the past. I used to run them with my honors class of sophomores because I believed in them. I've tried them. I I I saw tremendous value in empowerment of students. When students like, wait a minute, I can make a change in this world. They will actually hear me. So Ms. Brennely and Ms. Hulihan might remember Erin Egan and Kate Dan coming to you to talk about the school budget and how it's done and how facilities, you know, the monies are allocated. So they came to the school committee to interview them during the school committee meeting. They later managed to email superintendents of surrounding towns and they got a response. They got an interview with the mayor of some of the, you know, surrounding places. So they really, when they were sending all those things, I'm like, wow, really? Like I'm sending it to them into abyss. So will I really get anything out of it? And I think Ms. Clancy, they got you involved in the Virginia Crossland was trying to get you involved in the what they were doing that year. It was the the upkeep of the roads. I don't know if you remember that. They were trying to get involved the board of selectmen and I think Virginia specifically was specifically was trying to get to Ms. Clancy with that question. So I am a convert. I fully believe in what the state is trying to do. We ran out of time. We did not quite finish the project. We ran out of time because I was trying to do them within, again, the regular history, history curriculum and kind of playing it out by ear on my own. But even if you run out of time, even if it doesn't go perfectly, I think the impact is 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 great. It's just, it's a lot on both teachers. And again, I I thought I will talk to you because you might just get bombarded. So take it as a fair warning. But I guess that's my presentation and I would be happy to take any questions from you.
Thank you very much, Olga. This sounds fantastic and I'm really excited about it for our students. This is this is amazing. And I'm really sad that COVID interrupted the the progress you had started to make last year. I don't personally have any questions. I will say that I love policy. So you can send any of your students to me that you need to. And with that, do any of the other school committee members have any comments or questions? Mary.
I am right with Lydia. I am so excited by by this change in social studies. I think it's just going to create really proactive students versus I can tell you, going through years of history, I don't remember a thing. So but my question, so my question, Olga, is we did talk about increasing the number of years of history for for graduation requirement. If in an ideal world, we could have up at the high school, so in the eighth grade, it's going to be the other civics. But in the high school, if we're trying to, you know, shove this in among, you know, three other years, would it be helpful? Again, ideally, if we could have civics as a fourth year, like separate by itself as as that fourth year.
So some what I'm a member of the regional group of the social studies directors that we can be moving over different models of what it might look like. When I was doing it as a hobby, I was doing it as a part of the modern world history class. And it was just plopped in the middle of the year without really any specific direct connection to what we were studying. This year, we are placing it, well, this is start of it, within the progressive era. Kind of, you know, as the idea that people are taking reform and here you go, guess what, guys, you can also make a change in the world. However, it's still kind of, you can start there organically, but you can't really fully, you know, it's going to last for quite some time, take time out of the curriculum and which means that we might not have time for some very important other contemporary issues of American society, right? So some of the other schools that have that additional year of of the history requirements of four years versus three years. They are doing it as a standalone semester long class. So basically, it allows students to still take a semester long elective of social studies. Which we've been offering psychology and along government as semester based courses anyway. So kids, you know, and we we've been offering the dictators this year, which can be adjusted to. It's a year long course this year, but it can be adjusted to or to a more thematic, six months long, you know, semester based class. So in that way, you can really delve into issues in the process more without trying to kind of plop it in the middle of other curriculum.
Excellent. So that's something that we're that you guys are looking at as a possibility.
If so, again, I learned about the recommendations to have four years of history last Friday. In the end of the day, you know, it was my Friday gift, I guess.
We talked about it last week and just sort of, yeah, so you can blame Lydia and I for that.
No, 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 I I can be happy about it. So I I think if it will definitely take the pressure off and allow for better allocation of time and resources in that regard. The concern is that it will require hiring of an additional FTO. Which again, we've heard about possible lean years coming. So that makes us that that is a concern.
And there. Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right, Eric, to finish your thought.
I was going to ask, so and I again, my Pollyanna side of me, I was going to say in the past, when something new like this comes down the pike, the state at least will provide funding chuckle chuckle for the first year. No conversation about anything like that, right?
They've provided grants that we tried to write last year. We did not get it last year. They're talking about providing an additional grant possibly this year, but unfortunately, it's nowhere near covering an FTO.
The only thing I I did want to add in regards to the conversations about the the many iterations and Olga alluded to this with the regional directors meetings that she's attending. Many districts, districts are taking a wide variety of positions in terms of how they're implementing, you know, sort of to what would traditionally be, if you think about a US one, a US two, a world one and a world two. You know, they're looking at creating and Hudson has done this. Lincoln Sudbury has done this to some degree and those were the visits that Olga was talking about that we were looking to to do in the spring. And we will restart at some point, as Olga said, once we catch our breath in terms of the teaching and learning. But so what they're doing is they're looking at how can we teach sort of thematically rather than the traditional sort of march through the decades? How can we look thematically at world and US history together? Doing those maybe more in like a freshman and sophomore year. And then, as she mentioned, having opportunities within the junior year to be able to take some electives that may personalize some learning. So there's a wide variety of ways in which the districts are tackling these issues. the districts are tackling these issues. The other outstanding element that we don't know about yet and what I had said to the team last year that I'm very concerned about, um, there has been mention over the last several years of moving forward with a history or social science MCAS assessment, um, which would be a competency determination. And so making sure that whatever we put in place allows our students to um, to be able to gain that competency determination. Um, and the thing that scares me the most having um, we, I was teaching history at the time where we were piloting the, the old test that they were gonna put in. And it was very much a fact-based, you know, what happened on this data with this person. Um, and you know, I love, as Olga said, the direction that the state is going in terms of these civic action projects and and experiential learning and project-based learning. If they go in a different direction with that MCAS, we need to make sure that, that our students are prepared for that. Um, and so where are, where we place things and how we sequence things will will matter in that capacity. Um, so just wanted to throw those couple of things out there.
Excellent. All right. I just had one more question if I could, just one more, sorry. So with the senior project, I know that there are three different um segments that the students, so not all students have to do, you know, just the senior project based on what their learning um needs are. There are three different dimensions. Is there gonna be something similar to this with the civics projects?
Um, civics action projects allows for quite a lot of differentiation uh because it's action-oriented and goal-driven. So the level of inquiry might differ for, you know, AP or owner students, but uh I think the idea of trying to empower yourself is important for students, no matter their level or no matter the career path that they would choose. So uh it will be, and we're not talking about right now doing, you know, an owner's level versus not. Uh, but more of uh maybe differentiation uh of the tasks within each stage.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Natasha?
Um, Olga, thank you very much. And I, I'm sorry that COVID delayed things so long for you. So I was very excited to hear about this quite a while ago. Uh, I wonder, this is more like for the school committee and thinking about um, cause this, is this something that we think might be helpful to discuss in the, the curriculum and strategic planning subcommittee? Uh, it seems like it has a lot of those pieces that, because it's not something that we need to take action on necessarily right now, but it's evolving um in a long-term, but has policy and budget implications. Um, I'm wondering if that might be something we could hear vetted a little bit more about um to determine like what appropriate action we might need to take at, at some given point?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly create a presentation. I think probably what makes the most sense um is for Olga and her team um for us to restart the process to identify sort of the scope and sequence we want to put forward um to get sort of the timelines established and then provide that presentation. Um, and it probably would go to any number of committees from budget, et cetera. Um, you know, and, and as, as Olga mentioned, um, you know, there's a lot of steps in this process from curricular resources that, you know, there's a bunch of pieces that we're gonna be phasing this in over time.
Right.
In order to make sure that we can do it well, um, but then also do it in a fiscally responsible manner as well.
Okay, cause I think that it, yeah, it, it doesn't seem like we're, this is more like a, I guess, a sneak peek in my um into more to come um from, from our school committee. First of all, because we're not taking any action right now, but it sounds like there will be action required. Um, so I think as things evolve, I would, you know, and I don't want it to wait till like a school committee meeting, because that, you know, might be helpful to see if the, the subcommittee might be able to also process or be a platform to, to vet some of those things um a little bit in between as well. And um, and uh, you know, and it sounds like budget piece too, was obviously will be important to, to think about. Um, I'm guessing that might be um, may have been incorporated in, in a building ask um from the high school. I know we have yet to hear that yet at the school committee level, but I know next week we will be hearing within our budget subcommittee um the first kind of go-rounds. I don't know if that's something that's already been built into there potentially.
Hence my Friday meeting. So that's how the whole conversation started and how I find out about the possibility of the four years. So we did talk, we, uh first of all, the social studies department, we really put uh on breaks purchasing of new textbooks for the last uh a few years uh in anticipation of the kind of, you know, investment in the textbooks. Um, having said that, um, since our timeline got really um curtailed, uh we will need to move through things quicker, but since it does require quite a bit of investment, um, Mr. Corjean and I were talking about possibly rolling out uh the new textbooks and selecting, selecting new textbooks for US history courses this year. Um, so we actually have time to investigate the textbooks and, you know, making sure that we don't buy anything that is not aligning with the district goals of increasing more diversity and uh having those challenging conversations. But it all is the matter of resource of time um at, at this point for us. Um, because again, it's to investigate the different uh possibilities, to select the possibility, to then order the textbook samples, to then review textbook samples. So that's a rather complicated puzzle, uh given the pressure that we're facing and uncertainty of the time. Um, we, um, I am co-chairing the original meeting this year. Um, so we are we're not the only one in that boat. So I guess that, that helps the perspective a bit, but um.
I'm also thinking like it might be helpful to prioritize like what you are considering resource that may be more pressing now, you know, like maybe it might be like a year or two, or if that, if you can kind of tag them that way. Um, so that one, we're, we're making sure that they're aligning, but two, that, that it's not that everyone's making a rash decision, not that it could all happen one year anyway, but um, so that it also highlights what might be again, more time-sensitive to make sure that it's an effective rollout of, of, of the curriculum change.
Sure.
Also, I remember I did a civics project in my ninth grade and I loved it. That was one of my favorite things. It was, it was coordinating, putting a, a sign, a yield sign in my corner that people kept on. So it was just like a, you know, it was, I don't know, it was really fun. You know, you read it, we checked to adults and they kind of were like, what is this about? Um, you know, sometimes, you know, around the town, but I just really enjoyed it. So I, I certainly am excited to see that, that, that's more of the learning opportunity our students will be um able to, to do. Cause that's really kind of real life stuff.
Absolutely. And I, you remember going in March a couple of years ago uh to a workshop and I heard about it and at that time I had a great group of students and I'm like, well, I'm just gonna dive headfirst. Because if I'm not gonna try it with them, I don't know if I'm gonna be, you know, too chicken to try it with anyone else. Uh, there was no other requirement at that time. So we tried and again, the results were so positive that um I, I, I became a convert, uh which to an extent ended up being really beneficial for the district because last year I could really uh coach the uh person, the staff, you know, including the eighth grade civics teacher, Corey Sullivan, into what that's like. Um, I, for, you know, uh unfortunately, due to the luck of the draw, I'm not implementing. I'm not teaching the course where this project is being implemented in the high school or in eighth grade. So I'm more of a, you know, um in a counseling role, so to speak, this year, but uh I'm definitely can bring my expertise and kind of warn people of some, you know, um underwater stones here and there and how to try to maybe avoid them. So that, that was helpful.
Thank you.
Or anyone else? Nope. Thank you very much, Olga. That was, that was great. I'm very, very excited about this for our students.
I hope you're excited after you hear you are bombarded with the presentations, but.
Yeah, without numbers yet, we're very excited.
All right. Um, so our next order of business is policy.
This is where we lose our audience.
Yeah, this is where everyone like.
I imagine that's probably why we didn't have a lot of audience to begin with.
Yeah. Um, all right. So we uh in going through the meeting of October 1st and writing the minutes, Colleen discovered that we never actually made a motion to approve uh IHBF homebound instruction. Um, the conversation or discussion took a tangent and uh I think it was about making sure um if a student was in a Spanish immersion, they would be receiving instruction in, in remote instruction or homebound instruction in Spanish. Um, and so then I think I just lost where we were in conversation and so asked for a vote, but we um need to vote on that tonight. I'm assuming there is no more discussion, but I will um entertain a motion uh to accept IHB homebound instruction. And if I get a second, I will then open it up to discussion again. Hopefully, there won't be any.
I'll make that motion for, did you say it's IHBF? I put that one away. Is that the?
IHBF homebound instruction, yeah.
Okay, I made that motion.
Do I have a second? All right. Discussion.
Well, so I'm gonna disappoint you because I was actually gonna ask what, so you don't, you don't have any feedback to share about that or is that just was?
Feedback to share about what?
About, about the language piece about the instruction if they're homebound in their, in the language of their curriculum? Is that, that's, I think that's what we were referencing, right?
Um, yeah, and it, and the gist of it is that any student who is, has in-school instruction in um, in Spanish, if they're in the Spanish immersion program, they will receive instruction um remotely, e- even if they're homebound um in Spanish. They will, they will receive instruction in the language that they usually have um instruction in.
So I think we already had the discussion. We just didn't do the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We already had the discussion and we already approved it, but we never had any motions to approve. So that's why we have to do it again.
Wait, a motion, wait, I'm not sure.
Okay, so what happened was is we started discussing it. You started asking about Spanish. Um, and so then the conversation went on for a long, long time. I thought that a motion had been made because um, I don't know. And so I then took a vote, but a motion to approve it had never been made.
Oh, so there's no motion and a second on it is what you mean?
Right. Correct. There was no motion, no second. There was a lot of discussion and a vote. But all of it was invalid. So, or the vote was invalid. So we need to do that now. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alrighty then. Uh, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy? Yes. Okay, so now it is officially adopted.
So the adopted date will change?
Uh, that is correct. It will change. Um, from ten one to eleven five. Now, first reading. COVID travel policy. And since we're coming up on the holidays, I think this one is pertinent and um important. Does anyone have any questions, comments? This was um, Colleen, who, who wrote this? Or Brian, who wrote this? The travel protocol. I know we didn't take it from, it wasn't a mask thing.
I know that we sent it to Sarah because I have all the red line her changes. So can you get from our legal?
Yep. It's been to legal and um but I, I can't remember if we had someone in the district write it or Colleen, if you got it from another district?
This might be one that I got from another district. Um, Blue Hills Regional.
Yeah, okay. So. Oh, I know someone who works there.
One of our buddies.
Um, comments, questions, anything?
So this question, oops, sorry.
No.
Jessica.
Does this, this only applies to employees, not to students?
That's a good question.
Well, that's what I was kind of looking. I saw like compensate, the compensation part in work and it seemed like it was more tailored to staff.
My understanding is that yes, it was for employees because I don't think we can dictate what students do.
You can advise.
We can advise, but yeah, but.
Brian.
Well, we do have questions on the um health like back that um, I think the health check asks something. So that's where I was thinking that we would um, that would be part of this, that they would.
For us?
Huh?
Brian?
Yeah, so it says it applies to main or public schools employees.
Mm-hmm.
Roman numeral three.
Yeah.
So that's who it's geared for.
And we can't have a policy that applies blanketed across the, the, is that not something that's allowed that would apply to students?
I mean, we can't really tell them they can or can't.
Yeah.
Travel, but realistically, the governor's orders match this.
That, but that they have to quarantine, I guess, would be my, if you choose to travel to a, like I know for um, and somebody else that we um, a school did send out, if you choose to travel to certain um red states or whatnot, your child has to quarantine for 14 days or provide a COVID test that was taken four to five days after returning home, I believe it was.
Right, so that's in line with Governor Baker's orders. So that's true for everybody in the state.
And we can reiterate that.
We can remind them, but we don't need to create a policy.
Yeah. Okay, but it wouldn't tie into this one. This is totally different. Okay. Sorry. Thanks for clarifying.
Nope, no problem. All right, Natasha, you had a.
Yeah, so um, I'm just thinking about, because the, the health checks that, that folks do, because we do have parents who part of the health checks, it says if my student has traveled outside of Massachusetts as like the list of them, um that I will not send them to school and I will notify the nurse uh in the past 14 days. So I think maybe, Jessica, are you thinking like something like that? Like that language that if they is into incorporating a policy? Cause I, I would be in favor of something or consider something like that?
I, I think that's unnecessary because the state has already required that. It's, it's, it's already taken care of. This is basically because we have a union and a contract with the union and we need to um have certain policies that address certain issues with the union that we don't necessarily need to address with our students and families.
So with students and Brian, maybe you can clarify. Um, so if students are traveling, families are traveling outside of Massachusetts, does the state require them to quarantine for 14 days before they return their, the, before they're able to return to school? Is that, is it that explicit?
Yeah, or they have taken negative, they have to take a COVID test that comes back negative, but they have to quarantine until they get the results.
From, from the high.
Yeah, that's part of Governor Baker's orders, like the travel orders from the state.
Okay. I didn't know if it was about, about returning to school specifically.
It's anything past your house. If you're not, you, you're supposed to quarantine.
Okay.
So like for a student going to school would be like an adult going to work.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
I mean, I think it, it looks good. I mean, yeah. I, I don't see anything else.
Is um, the I'm just curious of um, oh, because it has the effect until, so this would be one of those policies that we would, it would automatically rescind once the governor's order.
Mental, yeah.
Um, okay. Cause I'm just looking at the um, the compensation components and, and whatnot and how um, how that works. Brian, I have another question about the, the testing. Brian, I have another question about the, the testing. I know that we had completed a survey to potentially participate in a rapid testing program for the state. Is that something that we would incorporate in the policy or consider?
Not right now, and actually, we are not looking to move forward with us owning the testing, because there's enough testing sites around the state that it's a pretty significant requirement or a pretty significant amount of work for us to sign on with that, that we have to get certain certifications to do it. And right now, the testing sites that they have up and running are more than adequate. So our, our nurses actually are not in favor of moving in that direction.
I agree, I think there's too many incidences of faulty testing, just because people need to be trained and it's, you know, it's in the school, and I think we really ought to just, that's not yet another task that the district should be responsible for. I think it just increases our liability.
The, the other thing too, just to be aware of, is that I believe that the test that we would be giving, it's an antigen test, would not, which would not be the test that a person would need to get in order to, to, to be negative. I believe the test that's required is the PCR test, so.
That's correct.
Even if we were to do that program, it would not fit in with what we're talking about here.
Yeah, yeah, it is a different, it is a different test.
Beth Lynn?
So I just have one question, just thinking about this from an employee's perspective for the compensation, and this is going to be operational, I think. I think it's fine as it stands for the policy, but just thinking of the implications, because for whatever reason, employee needs, is going to be traveling and they're going to quarantine, they're weighing whether or not to do that. Would you encourage them to check in first to make sure that they would be able to work remotely? Because they, it says that if the supervisor has determined employee can perform the essential functions under permission, position remotely, so they're not, you know, surprised by the fact that, well, I thought I could do it remote, I could just go remote, because we're, we're doing all remote. So I think that's an operational thing, I don't particularly need, I just, it's what occurred to me is kind of an implication in considering this. For your considerations.
Yes.
Working it out, let's now.
Okay, anything else?
Do we actually make the motion?
I know this is the first.
Huh? Are we going to vote on it?
Well, I don't know, I was just going to say, it's a first reading, so we don't necessarily have to, but if there aren't any additions or, or edits, and if people are comfortable with voting, we certainly could, but if it's not obligatory this time around.
It sounds like you've gone through legal and the unions have all, all unions have already viewed and provided feedback on it?
They've seen it.
They've seen it, okay. So they've, they've been, provided the opportunity to provide feedback, I guess. Okay.
And I believe M E S A got back and they said they were fine with it, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So we're going?
I, I would make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll accept one.
To accept the new COVID-19 travel code, protocol.
I second.
Um, discussion? All right, yippee skippy. Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
And Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Uh, Lydia Clancy, yes, all right.
Question that you, something that got brought up as we were talking about that, though, the rapid testing, I want to, maybe at some other point, we can have an update about the reasoning. I don't want that to get lost, and I don't think now's the time to talk about it, but I want to hear a little bit more about the reasoning of not to participate.
Do you want to put it on the rolling agenda item list?
I can, if that's, if we want to have it, yeah.
Do that, just so it doesn't get lost. All right.
Will do.
Um, next thing, I H B H E, this is new from mask. It has been through both of the unions and this is the first reading and it basically is addressing remote learning. And, and so are there any comments or questions about this?
And this has already gone through legal as well?
Well, it's directly from mask, we haven't changed any of the wording, so.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure, I, if you, if the feedback you got from the unions potentially had worked.
No, no, M E S A was fine with it, and we did not hear back from the M E A, so. But this was just newly passed or written in May by mask and sent out.
Can I, can I ask a question? Because I know this, we're doing a lot of policies and we're, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that we're getting information from all our stakeholders as best as possible with what we're doing, which is really so important, because there's a lot, a lot to implement and it impacts people's jobs. I'm just curious to understand where the feedback part from M E A is, is breaking down. Did I freeze? Sorry, I was, I was, I'm curious to hear the, where, because I, I can't imagine that members would not want to really hear this. Is it something that maybe the broad members are not possibly, I don't know, I just.
I don't think that's something we can answer, I think that's something you would have to ask Mike Waldron.
Okay, I, I just know that we've gotten feedback in the past when policies haven't been shared with them, and so now that policies are, we're really making a hard effort to do that, it's kind of, I'd say disappointing that I, that we're not.
Don't we post them all as part of the school committee agenda? So is, so if somebody really want, was curious, they, it's not like they're being hidden from them, correct? So we could still, they're posted.
They're posted, but I think in a, in a way that before it's presented to the school that we would be voting on it, you know, I would want like to pro, like to have, you know, member like processing it and, you know, just more engagement on it where it's not just voting, and it is what it is, I'm glad we're soliciting. Brian, yeah.
So just so you know, I've emailed all the policies to.
I know.
Both unions, and they've had, you know, several weeks to respond if they had a question or a concern or any.
We first met with them in, in June.
Oh.
All summer, yep.
Okay.
And, and, and then we met again with them, we presented it with Brian to them, we said it was coming, and it has, it was forwarded to them, there have been ample opportunities for discussion and, and feedback.
All right, well, as long as the members, I know we have staff that are, you know, attend these meetings, I just want to make sure that they're aware that also, that effort behind the scenes, and so that if they have questions, it sounds like they should just really ask their president about it.
Their initial concern, when we first brought it up to them, their only concern was will this impact the, the M O A? Is, or whatever the, the thing that you guys negotiated this summer in terms of the, the change in, in.
M O A, yep.
Yeah. So, and, so it was no longer an issue after the M O A was, was agreed upon and signed. And so that may be why we didn't receive any more feedback on it from the M E A.
No, thank you, and thank you for you guys working and trying to get everyone involved in, in getting feedback for us.
So were there any questions or any comments?
Should we, can we vote on it tonight?
Yeah, sure thing.
And this, this would be.
I will accept a motion.
Go ahead, Natasha.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the new I H B H E remote learning policy.
I can second.
All right, discussion?
The only thing I actually was wondering about, is this, this is not, this, this one doesn't have that same indication about COVID that the others do, so we are thinking that this would be a sustainable, like this would not be one of those rescinded kind, right? That it, it just is in place in the, in the event we ever need to use it again, right?
Correct, district, district specific emergency, so, you know.
Yeah.
Say one of the school floods, or, you know, Green Meadow, you know, gets hit by a tornado, I don't know. Yeah, so it's for that sort of thing.
And so part of, like, when we talk about school days.
Sorry, Jen. It's the asteroid, I just don't.
I know, I know. Well, no, because I was just thinking, we, we just had earlier a mention about snow days, and so would that be considered a, a district specific emergency that would require, this would fall, this would be one of those events?
No, this has nothing to do with snow days.
Where we would, where we would shift to remote learning?
Is.
Well, it does say, it does say weather emergency.
Yeah, that's where, so this, this would be the policy that we would essentially be following or for that type of event.
Yeah, it's applicable, it says, yeah.
Okay. All right, that was, that was my only additional question, because it.
Great. Any more discussion? Okay, vote. Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't hear you. I didn't hear Mary either. Okay, there we go. Lydia Clancy, yes, okay, excellent. And then we have the addendum, which is the I H B H E dash E, and this is just things to consider when creating remote learning plans, and it's more of a, a guidance and overview. So if there aren't, are there any comments or questions or things that people want to change?
Well, now that I was thinking about it with the implication of possible snow day or, well, no, beyond COVID, I just maybe want to look at it through that lens a little quickly again.
Sure.
I, I didn't know, I just had one thought about an addition while Natasha's doing that, on the second page, right above the source, May 2020, it talks about academic implications, parentheses, testing, grading, educator accountability, curriculum adaptations. I want, I didn't know if we wanted to add promotions, retentions, local graduation requirements, because I think that was on, that was on somebody else's, I think.
All right.
But I don't know if we need to get that specific up.
So this is kind of like basically a checklist in a, in a broad way, is that, like, just, okay?
I don't mind adding promotion and retention, but I don't know how the people feel.
Requirements, yeah. We, this is also just the first read of this, right?
Yeah.
So Natasha, if you have more time, we can always table this until the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, it looks like it's, I mean, I saw that, I did see the access, I did, I just wasn't initially thinking about it beyond COVID, you know, use, and so that just wanted to make sure, thinking more like long-term implementation.
All right, do we want to table it?
Yeah, probably a good idea.
Okey dokey. And that concludes our policy review.
Are we doing, are we already at a homebound instruction? All right.
Yeah, you didn't even know, you voted on it.
I voted on it, I think I made that motion. Nice. Maybe I seconded it.
You might have been rubbing your eyes, your eyes were.
Yes, I was having an issue.
Yeah, so you voted, you didn't even know what you're voting on, you voted on it.
All right, members, reports and comments. Natasha Rivera.
Oh, hold on, let me pull up, ooh. Okay, so negotiations, subcommittee, that's just ongoing conversations, more to come. I think we will probably need an executive session at our next meeting instead of tonight. Budget, so there's a couple, we have town and our, our locals, so next week, and I wanted to pull up these dates, okay, so at our, our next meeting for the school subcommittee, we're meeting to, well, we have our meeting, but we're going to be getting a first draft of the budget request, the first draft of the school's budget request. And so the, for the committee, we expect that we will then be able to solicit feedback from everybody, share that, and then have a subsequent meeting, I think, December 2nd. So we'll get between that window of next week and December 2nd, we'll be able to gather that feedback, share it with Brian and team, and then we'll be able to see like a, a second draft. And then afterwards, we will, December 17th is when the budget request will be presented to the full board in final version. Let's see, what else in the last, um, of the, in just a timeline of just looking at things that we have coming down the pike, we have our next, we just had October 20th, was it 26th, Mary, or 27th, yes, the, the town budget subcommittee meeting, and that was good, you know, we have a new tool that they've worked with, the Collins Center, and this is something that, so maybe you've already seen, Bob McCarthy had worked on one, this is like that on steroids. So it's a really robust forecasting tool, and not just forecasting, they've already pre-populated a couple of years' worth of historical data. So how Greg explained, and I'm sure Brian, you, you and Greg will be talking about if you haven't already, about the use of this tool will be that he will be using it to, be like one tool, and that'll be populating information and then sending it to the department, and they can populate, you know, so it'll be a kind of a in-useful, ongoing tool that will help guide, you know, forecasting, and also, there was even things like a line where you plug in COLA, you know, like for average with a unit, it shows you the impact of all the different, how much costs for the different lines. So that was pretty, pretty cool to, to hear about and to see in, in action, and the, Greg's team will be the owners of entering the data, so for the year, so they'll have like the end of the year, so they'll be kind of managing that, so that's kind of a work in process, which was really exciting to, to see. And then there were some questions, I think we need to work out, and we'll be meeting in our, we can talk a little bit more about the understanding of the 60/40 calculation, there seemed to be a still a wee disconnect on, on that interpretation. A member in the committee indicated, or how it was expressed to Mary and I, was that we, the town pays for certain things on our behalf, so we're kind of getting, how it was implied was that we're getting extra money above our budget, and that did not seem to be my understanding, but I think Brian, next week, and I know that Wayne had sent a really great breakdown of that, so I think Mary and I will just want to kind of clarify that, because I want to make sure we're all on the same page with that, because it, it seemed different in the interpretation of the service, it's the shared services that, that the school pays for, and so that part, it needs to be worked out with. And then I, I think that, you know, part of our meeting, we're going to be kind of have a standing revenue opportunities that we'll be, you know, looking at, and so you, you guys would have seen the blast about the preschool that Brian and team had sent out, and Colleen, I'm sure, worked some magic to help get all those on the social media, but trying to solicit enrollment for preschool for students that were open, so that was, you know, one of those efforts. And then thinking about planning for FY22, you know, how we can further address the possible revenue opportunities as well. And at FinCom, oh, Mary, do you have anything else you wanted to add from?
Nope, you've got them all, yeah.
Okay, okay, and then from the, from FinCom. Okay, okay. And then from the, from FinCom meeting, um, being a liaison there, uh, they talked a little bit about, scheduling and one of the things that got brought up that meeting was on, that meeting was on the 26th, sorry. So, uh, they, they are approving, um, reserve fund transfers and, and so typically they, well, at years past, they approved them at the end. Um, they were presented a couple of sick buy, sick leave buybacks for the police and, uh, the fire department. And so the, the board at the time felt that they would like to hold off because possibly they don't need to utilize reserve fund transfers for these if they're, um, able to be absorbed potentially like lower overtime or whatever. So kind of keeping that cush of reserve fund if there was a need, um, around the district for, uh, for any department that might need it for unforeseen, especially with COVID going on. The capital planning committee is presenting their recommendations to the Board of Selectmen by the 31st of December, so that Greg will be able to incorporate that in the budget. Um, and I think that might be, I could talk more, but I think that's, that's it for now. Oh, and this, the CPAC, um, we did have to delay, uh, the presentation for that. So that will be coming, uh, down, down the road, yet to be determined, but not right now. Jess, Jess, is there anything from CPAC or the other thing? That was really the only thing more recent, right?
Believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Alrighty, uh, so next, Mary Brantley.
So the only additional is that we did have a, um, our first, um, for this year, the wellness committee meeting. And, um, so the four goals are going to continue the way that they were last year, social, emotional, um, learning goal, obviously. Physical activity goal, school safety, wellness goal, and then, um, sound nutritional practices. So it's just a continuation from last year is what we're focusing on. So, that's it.
Alright. Bethland.
Alright, so, um, I, I mean, do you mind Jessica, if I just look, I'm just going to mention what we talked about in the strategic planning.
Sure, yeah.
I'm just gonna, I just pulled up the notes that we were taking while we were going through stuff. Okay. So if you have anything else to add, feel free.
Along with my notes and then I'll let you know if I have anything else.
Okay, cool. So October 29th, we met with the strategic planning subcommittee. Um, and we, first we reviewed, they had, um, Jennifer and Brian, myself and, um, and Jessica were there. And we first, whenever they put together a, the, a master report of towns that have a curriculum subcommittee, is we were considering how we're framing our work, um, in, in the subcommittee. And it really underscored that there are, um, uh, there are the, by far the majority, I think that maybe they were just, uh, I don't, I don't remember how many, like, but percentage wise, it was maybe like 15% um, that still had like a curriculum subcommittee named that. So, um, we were thinking that as we've talked about, it really helped underscore being able to consider that we're engaging around curriculum when it's appropriate in relation to budget, just as we have a, the conversation with Olga tonight and as, as there are implications and things that we could discuss around, um, around the reworking of that curriculum for, in relation to budget that, that may come to us first. And we, um, look at that, the priorities of that in relation to the strategic plan and you'd look at it in the budget subcommittee, might look at it in relation to budget, and then we'd all come together and talk about it. So that was just helpful to see. And then we, we did, um, just review the strategic plan, like, look at that in relation to district goals. We also had the district goals draft at that point. So, um, what we want to do is have, is have you all take a look at those goals, which we had for our, um, our workshop just prior to this meeting and be able to consider any feedback that you might have in relation to those goals, the district goals, um, and consideration of this, and, and considering them under the alignment of the strategic plan. Um, and then we really started to think about like, alright, so if, if we're trying to understand, more about really trying to, rather than getting into, we had talked before, uh, previously about not trying to create, um, go through a strategic planning process right now, but really focus on, um, using what we have as the strategic plan as our guidepost while we're in the moment of such upheaval. And ways that we can continue to integrate that into our activities and processes at the level, at, at the touch points that we have as a school committee. So considering the places where we went to that, we looked at the general calendar to try to see, like, we had made a suggestion that the strategic plan could be integrated more into different presentations and being, so that everything kind of gets, gets, um, related back to that, to the strategic plan. So we see where it aligns and continue to use that as our guidepost. And with that in mind, we looked at presentations that could be made to the school committee and that were in relation to the, to the calendar, the general calendar of, um, presentations. Natasha, we had that open, we were looking at it at the meeting. And so we just kind of started talking that through about when certain things could, could, um, hit. And when including trying to do, um, trying to really look at, um, uh, a couple of things. So, uh, a social, emotional learning goal, doing, looking like survey data and actions based on the surveys done in January, March and June, and considering that, because that's also, that's in our strategic plan as one of our, uh, a pillar of considerations. So again, looping it back. Um, and then there were some others that we looked at, including having some teacher-based presentations, so they can share things that are going on that loop in again, that are initiatives, but that loop back in to our overall, um, uh, plan and, and vision. So those are some of the things that we, we talked about and, um, we did talk also about the, when we looked at the general calendar, we talked about, um, looping the budget back, looping, um, the, um, in January, we have an assessment. I don't know what that one is, but it's on the general calendar. Do you know what that is Jessica?
I think it's, that's when they have like some data collection, correct? Right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So like mid-year assessments. Um, and then wellness committee, there were a couple of places where we thought that we could, um, could definitely have it looped back. And we did want to make sure that wherever, um, wherever we do have like a, a, a particular presentation from that general school community presentation is that we are able to, we were thinking that we would be able to, is our subcommittee, help to shepherd, um, the requested conversations and goals from the discussion that the school committee might have and, and do that perhaps through, um, ensuring through Lydia that, that we're getting to what people want to get to. So it's, that was one of the things that we wanted to, that we talked about in relation, again, to, let's think about the larger picture of the, in, in our strategic plan and tying every, if we're tying everything back to that, how do we then make sure that each of the presentations that we're seeing is really, um, centering that strategic plan and that we ourselves, in the course of what we're looking to, to gain, gain from a particular conversation, a particular presentation, also have that in mind and consider our questions from that standpoint. So, um, we don't need to be the ones to broker those questions, but just that's something Lydia, that we'd want to make sure, or whoever is the chair, that they were aware of for the sake of making sure that we're setting people up that might be doing presentations, um, to be, um, to have, to be able to be successful and, and meeting what may be in our minds for what we hope to get out of that.
Okay.
And then, um, discussing with the administration, the administration would discuss the kinds of presentations the human, community may want based on what they're hearing from parent and teacher feedback too, so that we're looking at those in the context, again, of, the larger picture for the district. So we're just taking that overlay for when we were, for that particular meeting. Jessica, would you add anything?
This sounds like this might be a discussion that we want to have as an agenda item for us to all contribute. So if you could add it to the, uh, rolling agenda, that would be awesome.
Are you, we can have a deeper, deeper discussion. Framework of the committee or what would be our discussion particularly?
Our discussion would be about all of this stuff that they, it seems like they're proposing to do, right?
Okay.
Like that.
Yeah, and we, that was exactly what we were thinking, is we try to come up with some, um, thoughts around what would make sense from the perspective of the touch points for the school committee and then offer that to everyone to be able to weigh in. Jessica, would you add anything else before?
No, I think that was pretty much everything I had down. And I also just double-checked the agenda from that. And I think, um, yeah, that was it.
Alright, so if you can add that to the rolling agenda so that that doesn't get lost, that would be helpful. Alright, and Natasha, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know that you said something that just kind of reminded me, um, in, in, when I was speaking with Dorothy in prepping for our workshop, um, about the curriculum, because one of the things that she said is that, yeah, that standalone curriculum subcommittees is not something that, you know, serves a really good purpose. But she indicated that she thought that combining it, like how we were, you know, like the strategic curriculum, strategic planning would allow that space, you know, to have those conversations, like the one we, like with Olga today or things that we've done in the past, um, that where we've spent money to have that monitoring opportunity on, on, on that, you know, like Spanish immersion or whatever it is, um, so that we could, from a school committee perspective, um, you know, see how we're, our investment is, is, you know, working, um, and just hearing, hearing feedback about that. So, yeah, so I just wanted to reinforce kind of a little bit what you said was that she, yeah, a standalone, but she certainly thought that it would be helpful to include in, in there as well. And I couldn't remember if I emailed that to everybody. That's, I was trying to look for notes. I don't know if I did or not, anyway.
Jessica, oh, sorry, Bethland, are you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Alright, Jessica Clark.
I think that it was covered by, everything was covered by Bethland or Natasha for my subcommittees.
Okay.
If you want to, if you want to be the one to cover something sometime, you can always take lead on it. I'm very happy to share the limelight around the subcommittee reports, Jessica, just so you know.
That's fine.
Alright, so I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Should we adjourn? I mean, really, people, do we want to adjourn?
Big time, nobody wants to adjourn.
Mary, well, we're the only ones left. Everyone else has.
No, Carol's here. Thank you for staying around, Carol. I see you're square.
Yeah, we're, yeah, anyway.
Okay, I see Carol. Um, alright.
Jeff gets bonus points for being here too. He didn't have a thing to say when he was here the whole time. I'm sure you could have said things in your head.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Hi, thank you, thank you Jennifer as well.
Yes.